So it being, um.
Five oh three.
Five o'clock.
And we have, all the members of the board are present. And, um, so I will entertain a motion for us to enter executive session.
We have been entered into executive session under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21/6 to consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, the MCI Concord facility. The Chair having declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town and resumed to open session following conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
I need to have a real call vote. Mr. Howell?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye. Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Ginn?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, Ms. I from Minnesota.
Aye.
Component of calling a meeting to order. This is the March 4th open session of the Concord Select Board and the first item of business. We've already had our executive session, which adjourned. We will discuss that later this evening under the, under the item of the dealing with the MCI property. And so we will move, since the agenda has been so full for tonight, we will skip public comment and move right to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Oh, wait a minute, I forgot. There's one word missing and one letter. The letters are really excellent, really good letters. The letter to DOT about the Route 2.
And you want to consent to an additional word?
Yeah, the word 2, TO. I can just give it to Shannon. It should say, we expect solutions to the traffic problems on Route 2 to include reducing the barrier effect, blah, 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 blah.
Well, we'll just pass on that as an administrative amendment. Okay, and then we move to appointments.
Move to appoint Gregory Dorothy of 188 Border Road as an associate member to the West Concord Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2027. Move to appoint Joshua Fay of 44 Powers Road to the Personnel Board to complete an unexpired term to expire on May 31, 2026. Move to appoint eight election workers as outlined in the Select Board Meeting Packet by the Town Clerk on behalf of the Board of Registitors. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay. Town Manager's report, Meg.
Thank you. This is Megan Zmudo, Deputy Town Manager. For this week's report, I'd like to start by thanking the Clerk's Office and the election workers who have been hard at work with this year's primary election. Early voting has concluded and the presidential primary is tomorrow at polling locations from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. There's a Finance Committee public hearing in this room on Thursday at 7:00 PM and many other meetings and events that are on our town website. In the Police Department, I wanted to note that Ms. Jody Geary retired from the department after many years of service as the department's record clerk, and she retired on February 23rd, and we thank her for her service. An update on Ministerial Drive. So work started on Monday, February 26th, on the repairs of failed drainage and sinkholes that developed a few weeks ago and progressively got worse, warranting the closure of Ministerial Drive at the intersection with Loring Drive. Excavation revealed that the road that was originally constructed in the 1960s was built on soils with poor structure strength, explaining the excessive cracking and settlement in the area. So work has been interrupted by breaks on Wednesday and Thursday and an old fragile water supply pipe that runs within the excavation limits. So we're replacing a large section of the water main. It was performed but not planned for. Residents in the area were out of water for the better part of two days. So work on the drainage and the roadway repairs is expected to continue for the next week or so, and the progress is dependent on weather. So the road closure and detour will be in place for the duration of the work. So just wanted to give an update on that. For the Fire Department, on March 1st, the Concord Fire Department responded to a structured fire at 115 Independence Road. Upon arrival, the crew discovered that the fire was located inside a wall on the second floor of the house, and they were able to contain and extinguish the fire quickly. The Council on Aging worked with the Concord Free Library, who provided soil and seeds, with the Pollinator Advisory Committee and West Concord Green Thumbs Pollinator Pathway for a spring seed sowing event last week, and participants walked away with several jugs of soon-to-be seedlings of various wildlife, or wildflowers that will bloom around Concord. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. My Chair's report will inform you that the, that I and the board have spent a great deal of time dealing with the disposition of MCI Concord, that there have been many discussions, and there was a very productive meeting sponsored and directed by the League of Women Voters on Friday, which I think had well over 100 people attending. Many points of view were presented, and I think it did serve a very useful purpose to fill the information vacuum that had been persisted about this process. We'll have a more thorough report on this a little bit later as a result of the executive session we had with our two state reps, Mr. Cataldo and Mr. Gentile, earlier this evening. And we're moving forward in a very positive way, working together to make sure that the town has a very significant voice in the disposition of that property. So that brings us right to the next item, which is discussion regarding future of MCI Concord's property with state representatives, and Ms. Hartman will present the.
Select Board.
Did I skip something?
Are we going to do the Select Board Liaison Reports?
Well, oh, because my eyesight is not as good as it once was. So let's then have Select Board Liaison Reports. Do you have some reports? You must have one.
I do.
You don't.
Shall I begin? Okay. First is the Trails Committee continues to meet, and they're really a model for many of the committees within town. It's a group of stewards that go out and maintain our trails, and they either pick up dead wood or fix puddles on their own, or they notify the NRC. So when you enjoy our trails in Concord, you've got this committee to thank for that.
Because they love what they do.
They do.
Yes.
And I do, too. The Economic Vitality Committee, Jennifer Schinaman, who's been the longstanding Chair, has resigned that position and resigned from the board so that she could focus on her Discover Concord magazine endeavors. Mike Lawson, the presumptive Chair, has decided to step up early, so the Economic Vitality Committee has a new Chair. There is a joint meeting with the Planning Board and the Economic Vitality Committee scheduled for this Wednesday night at 7:00. And I believe that they will be discussing, I think, the MBTA Communities Act, as well as any policy changes that they, or bylaw changes that the Planning Board is contemplating that would have an impact on economic vitality. The West Concord Cultural District Commission recently published a video on their Facebook page titled "Our West Concord," which really does a great job of promoting the restaurants, the retail shops, the trails, just the vibe of West Concord. And if you get a chance, I would really recommend that you, that you watch that. I think it's only like three minutes or so, but it really, it really captured, I think, what's wonderful about West Concord. And then finally, this, we don't have a liaison here, but I needed to say this. There's a play playing at the Umbrella Arts Center called "The Minutes," and it's a parody of town government that, that.
Is that possible?
But it also has a deeper meaning, which is very timely for what we're going through here right now in Concord. So it just opened on Sunday. I really recommend that you, you go there. It's a hoot.
Linda, you always have some good reports.
Sure, thank you. I met with the, attended the Warner's Pond Task Force, which was putting together, really, their organization meeting, and it was interesting, and I'll just comment, Bill Camazo was named the Chair of that committee. He has extensive administrative experience and has also chaired a previous NRC committee. And, but one of the tasks that they had to do, and I thought was interesting, was to identify what their greatest accomplishment would be at the end of this task force experience when they've already submitted their report to the Select Board. So that was an interesting task that they went through. Like many of my colleagues, we were at the First Friday League of Women Voters Session on MCI. It was terrific to hear all the viewpoints, and you're right, I think there were 150. There were, altogether, so that was a terrific. People were hungry for the information about where all of us were and what we were thinking about MCI.
It shows what controversy does for government involvement.
Right. And also attended the ZBA meeting, and the Thoreau Project, 40B Project on Forest Ridge Road, walked through, had their initial walkthrough, I would say, of the project, and they were, which, so there were not a great deal of comments or questions related to that, but they were encouraged to come back with much more detail because it was really at an extremely high conceptual level at this point in terms of what they presented. And then I, too, attended the Economic Vitality Committee, and it's clear that they're now action-oriented in terms of actual items that they're going to take at the end of the meeting and where they're going to go next. So that was great to hear. Those are the highlights.
Thank you. Terry?
I, too, attended the League of Women Voters meeting on Friday. It was a great standing-room-only crowd, and I want to mention that D-Cam Commissioner, Adam Baiki, was there. He ended up speaking, and he was very impressed, he said, with, I guess, he didn't use this word, but how civil our debate was. We weren't, we were very, even though there was some disagreement, people were very engaged and in a good spirit of collaboration, and he really appreciated that, as did we. On the Transportation Committee, our Chair, Laura Davis, worked with Franny Osman in Acton, who started the Crosstown Connect, and both towns are applying for the same grant, this Mass DOT micro-transit grant. So they both changed their application, and Beth Williams is involved, and it's a regional application now for micro-transit, which gives us a better chance of getting it and a better program. Also, Elizabeth Hughes is submitting a grant for the Aspet River Pedestrian Bridge, and we'll hear more from the PEG Committee tonight, but COA has gotten a grant to update the hearing assisting equipment in these hearing rooms. And in the town budget, there is a vehicle with, money for a vehicle with recording equipment, which we will need for the 250th. And that's it for my report.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Terry, for the grant for the Aspet Pedestrian Bridge, is that for the construction or design or what phase do you know?
We're not up to construction yet, and I'm not really sure exactly. It seems like we.
Design, it's the design phase.
Yeah, but we keep getting grants for design.
Yeah.
We're still designing it, so I'm not sure why.
Well, the design becomes, it gets, yeah.
Okay.
25% or 50% design, so.
It goes up to 100%.
They get more specific.
So it will be designed.
It actually finances the next grant application.
Okay, thank you.
So for those people that didn't get a chance to go to the, the forum, First Friday Forum last Friday, that YouTube video is already up and available on the Miniman Media Network YouTube channel, and it's highly recommended. I'd like to compliment Megan Zmudo for her presentation, as well as Senator Barrett and Simon Cataldo and Lee Smith, all of whom happen to be in this room right now, for their presentations. It was really informative, and anyone who wants to get up to speed on that should, should do that. As long as I'm plugging the League of Women Voters, I'll just remind everyone that the candidate forum for next, for the next town election is in this room on Sunday on, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. So turn out and see who's running for office for here in Concord. They may get a part in play soon, I guess. No? Minutes?
And we look forward to seeing you there, yes.
And just building a little bit on, the Warner's Pond Task Force did have its second meeting. Christine De Nera was actually named co-chair along with Bill Camazo, voted by that, by the Task Force, and so we have two citizen co-chairs of that group, and we're, you know, beginning to get organized, so that's a, that's a good thing.
What group is that?
The Warner's Pond Task Force.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so. And there's also a webpage now, and it's slightly different to find it. It is a subcommittee of the Natural Resources Commission, so for those folks who want to find the Warner's Pond Task Force information, the recordings of the meetings and the videos, presentations are all going up, along with quite a bit of the background information. It's listed as homework for those, so anybody who wants to, to track that as we get to work on that. That's it for me.
Does that take care of all the reports?
It does.
Yes? Okay, then we do move on to this discussion regarding MCI Concord, and we did, at the end of our executive session, we did take a vote about going forward with that, and Ms. Hartman will now present the, if you can remember what you said.
I can. I can.
You can, okay.
I can, I can. Thank you, Henry. Yes, we had a very productive executive session. We listened to the many voices we've heard asking to have a more active voice in the disposition of MCI Concord. We made a motion, it passed unanimously. There are two parts to that motion. One is, is that we would set up an advisory committee at the local level, as soon as practical, that will bring together some of the expertise that we have in town and kind of flesh out what does the town want to see there. Concurrently with that, we also agreed to support the establishment of a state commission through an amendment to the Governor's Budget Bill that would establish a commission that would include representatives from our local committee, as well as members of state agencies, so that we would have a continual conversation between what the state is hoping to accomplish, what we're hoping to accomplish concurrently. We also talked, not as part of the motion, but separately, we talked about the continuing need for communication, communication from town to the residents of Concord, because we found that the League of Women Voters forum that we had on Friday was so helpful because people felt that they were finally learning what's being done, and we need to continue that, and we need to continue to let people know, as we know, going forward, so that people feel that they are included.
Good, thank you. So that, that's pretty much where we stand now, and we have the pleasure and honor of having with us tonight our three legislative members who may want to say a word or two about this process, which, and I will introduce them in order of seniority. Senator Barrett, please.
Sure.
Please.
I agree with the statement that the session the other day at the League of Women Voters was extremely helpful. Thank you all for attending. The town was extremely well-represented, and that was important because, as it turns out, the Commissioner, who's going to be in charge of disposing of the state asset, came himself, I think for the second time in about, second time in as many weeks, and clearly the state recognizes that Concord has a very strong claim on the disposition of the property. I think the Commissioner's attending for the second time in as many weeks is expressive of his respect for the community and the Governor's respect. You all, some of you may know that Lieutenant Governor herself accompanied the Commissioner in an earlier visit to Concord. So my sense is that housing, in particular, family housing, is perhaps the highest-profile issue the state will confront, together perhaps with the immigrant crisis that is besetting the country over the next several years. My sense from the body language and the statements of state government officials is that they really feel invested in creating a model of collaboration. I don't think they feel that they could get away with railroading the town. The town isn't about to stand for that and is capable of standing up for itself, but I don't sense that that was even an early interest on the part of the Commonwealth. Instead, I think they are invested in demonstrating, perhaps for the rest of the state, because many parts of the Commonwealth will face housing questions and development questions more broadly of their own. I think they want to model for the rest of the state what a conversation between a town, a well-prepared one, and the state can look like. So at the moment, I don't think there is a enormous cause for suspicion. I think instead the town starts off with a good deal of political capital, and you do have two extremely capable state representatives, one of whom is here with me today, Representative Carmen Gentile. Oh, and I didn't realize Simon was there, I'm sorry. He was modestly, I was going to, I thought maybe you were watching, taking care of the kids. I intend to be extremely active on this issue as well. So, and perhaps more importantly, or at least equally importantly, you've got a very mobilized community already that is beginning to get a sense of how it might proceed. I'm reserving judgment myself on exactly what form the collaboration could take. There is much to be said for a formal commission, but there are some drawbacks, interestingly, to formalizing an exchange in a commission form. I've learned this because I handle climate policy for the State Senate and have now been a member of a number of state commissions and state working groups, and something very counterintuitive happens when you embark in that kind of exchange. The Governor's people feel compelled to run background checks on every non-state official. I think the background check, in general, is a prudent thing to do, but in particular, there's also a concern that anyone who hasn't previously been vetted by the state government could conceivably wind up embarrassing the Governor who appoints him or her. I think that's very unlikely to happen in this particular case, but these background checks happen every time. And one's favorite commission, one's high-priority appointees don't go to the head of the queue. There are going to be dozens of other people already in line to get their background checks, perhaps because they're being considered for state appointments. So the commissioners are back in the queue. This process can take months. It would, it would probably, my best guess is, occasion a six-month delay in our getting started, over and above whatever other delays might be involved in state processes, but it could be more than six months. Nobody can promise to, to let your appointees jump the queue because all kinds of other folks are pushing to have their favorites in line, too. So the commission has some strengths. Once it gets cranking, there's a certain gravitas to the deliberations, so that's a good thing, but inevitably will involve additional delay over and above what we anticipated. So we need to consider the pros and cons. I noticed that the D-Cam Commissioner, already in statute, has the discretionary ability to appoint an advisory group, which is a practical matter, which serves the same function as a commission. He, of course, could agree in advance, after a conversation or negotiation with the town, to do precisely that in this case. He could commit himself publicly to using his discretionary power that already exists. I think it's Sections 33 and 34 of Chapter 7C of the General Laws. He could already use his authority to, as I say, publicly commit himself to what it effectively would be a commission. Advisory groups may or may not, we'd have to find out, involve as much red tape as formal commissions do. In my experience, the executive branch folks have a kind of hierarchy, and some less formal gatherings do, in fact, move more quickly. I know this because, again, in the climate area, I'm a member of one formal commission, I'm a member of three working groups, and I'm a member of one intergovernmental coordinating council. All five groups meet, but the working groups came together more quickly than the Governor's formal commission did. That's just an editorial observation. The longer point is that, at the moment, Concord, I believe, is operating from a position of strength. I think, my best judgment is, and I haven't seen this, obviously, in the case of Massport and Hanscom, so I've seen governmental agencies run roughshod over localities. This strikes me as quite a different case, and I believe that here, there's going to be a great deal of interest in, as I say, conversing with the town. The process is likely to take two, three, four years. This is a very complicated site, so nothing moves very quickly in any event. I am very optimistic, however, I just want to end on a, on a cautious note. We could dissipate the leverage we have. We could lose what I believe is a significant amount of goodwill on the part of the state at the moment, a desire, basically, to, to look good in Concord and to show that to the region. There's no question that the Governor has a real commitment to building a family housing, market rate most of it, but some would be affordable, too. There's no question that resistance to that is cropping up everywhere. There was a vote in Milton, Massachusetts, two weeks ago that did not go well. There was an article in Today's Globe about Rockport, Massachusetts. I think that politically, you don't want, you wouldn't want to be a, I know this town wouldn't be a part of it anyway, but if, for some unforeseen reason, Concord were to become a part of the Milton-Rockport problem, if you want to call it that, hesitation resistance, then, then attitudes on both sides harden, and a different kind of dynamic could conceivably unfold. But I don't expect that to happen here. I think there's a commitment, I'm guessing, on the part of the state to, to mixed-use development of a wonderful parcel. It would include commercial and presumed retail, presumably it would include open space, it would include, we hope, the water treatment plant rehab, but a lot of it will involve housing, ideally for seniors and everyone else, but there would be a significant family housing component. I am, that's, in general, I'm sure, what the state imagines will unfold here. In general, it's what I'm hearing interest in on the part of Concordians, too. The details matter, but I sense a reasonably strong congruence between state and local interests in the property, so this should go well. It should enable the town to be aggressive in asserting an interest in all the particulars. I personally think that that could start sooner rather than later. I think it could start even before we adopt the Senate budget, on which some legal language would be a part, it could start right away. Again, I'm reserving judgment on whether a formal commission. Again, I'm reserving judgment on whether a formal commission would help or possibly slow things down. I'd want to hear more from the state on that score. Again, my experience has been one that makes me cautious. Sorry to speak so long, I just wanted to give you a sense as to what the lay of the land is, so far as I can tell.
Thank you very much. And it makes this, this makes it clear that by starting to put together our own local advisory committee, that's something we can move ahead with right away, and we don't have to wait for anybody to get appointed or to get the budget passed. We can start.
Yeah, but you're right, Mr. Chairman. A tactical decision, and I look forward to hearing from my House colleagues and from you, a tactical decision, though, would, might involve asking the DCAM Commissioner to exercise his formal authority to appoint an advisory group. Because, again, it kind of formalizes things, but there is no question, regardless of the outcomes of that conversation amongst us all, that...
And that would give the local group higher standing as...
I see.
And credibility, if it was appointed, but still responsible to the town.
Sounds interesting, yeah.
Very interesting.
I'm sorry, Terry, you go.
I'm always glad to hear your point of view, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next in seniority, Mr. Gentile. I don't know how many of you know Carmen Gentile. He is our new state rep, relatively after the redistricting, and so he now, we now have two state reps. Carmen Cataldo, Carmen, Simon Cataldo and Carmen Gentile, who has represented Sudbury and Framingham.
So, Concord is my new Framingham. I used to represent one precinct in Framingham, now I represent two precincts in Concord, of the 13 precincts overall that I represent. My wife has told me that Concord is my new Framingham, and the reason she said that is because Framingham, a municipality of 60,000-plus people, while I only represented one precinct, I would be there and involved in so much that it almost overshadowed my participation, my appearance in other communities. And Concord, I have to tell you, the people of Concord are so civically engaged, it's wonderful. It's just incredible. And that's one reason, that's a big reason why I feel that this project, this of rezoning and redeveloping the MCI Concord property, will be successful. Because I have no, there's no question in my mind that the folks here in Concord will come together and look at this property and roll up their sleeves and look at what they want to have happen there and do it. And of course, one way to do it is, you know, to realize what you want to have happen there and rezone the parcels so that what you want to have developed there is what's developed there, and nothing else. And of course, making use of that water treatment plant that's there to continue using it. I would thank Senator Barrett for your remarks. I think we're very much on a very similar page on this. And, you know, I had written legislation to create an office of employee ownership and appoint an advisor, and part of that legislation was to create an advisory board. That was back in July that it was signed into law. It was about one week ago that the advisory board was sworn in. So, you know, we move slowly. And so, I think that we need to, and Representative Simon Cataldo has really done a great deal of work on this, and he's to be, you know, congratulated on all the time and effort and the work he's been doing on this. I think all of us, rowing in the same direction together, will get a good result. And part of that result is to continue a really good relationship with the administration. I mean, we, I met, together with you and others, with the Lieutenant Governor here and Senator Barrett and Representative Cataldo, a couple of weeks ago, with the Lieutenant Governor here, and then she was back again, and then Commissioner Baki, and of course, he was back here again last weekend, this past weekend. So, I'm very, I'm very confident that we're going to get a good result redeveloping this parcel. And we need to just keep moving, working together, and maintain a good relationship with the administration. They've already shown very goodwill towards us, as the Senate pointed out, as we've all seen in the meetings they've had with us here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to make, I want to make clear that it's very unusual that we have something we're working on together, where we get our whole legislative delegation involved in it and coming to the town to speak with us. And I think it reflects, well, not only the town, but on the way the town is being run, that we can expect this kind of participation by some people who have the ability to be extremely helpful to us in advancing not only this agenda, but all of our agendas with state government, because we're very reliant on what, on our relationship with the administration. So, having said that, Simon, would you like to say a few words? Simon, being the most junior of our legislators, is also the only one who was a native of the town of Concord.
West Concord, Mr. Chairman.
No, same zip code, that's all that matters.
I was, I learned earlier today, from a local historian of national renown, that the way that Concord got our prison was actually through a competitive bidding process, which we won. When they were closing the Charlestown Penitentiary in the late 1800s, Concord bid on the prison and won. And I think about that in the context of the seats that you're in right now, and what that conversation might have been like for the leaders of Concord in choosing to attract a very significant prison to our town. I'm so grateful for the work that you've been doing. I know, I've been asking a lot of you in your volunteer and very important capacities in getting input on what you'd like this process to look like. And I'm also so grateful to the many, many, many residents of our town who have reached out to me, some of whom have an extremely sophisticated level of expertise in these manners, in these matters. And I know that many folks have reached out to you, too. I'm very committed to making sure that Concord has a formal role in this process. I agree that the administration has said and done, not just all the right things, but they've gone above and beyond to reach out to us, to start this relationship off-right. And that's something that I don't think is to be taken for granted. We have nothing to fear from formalizing the collaborative spirit that they have expressed that they're interested in. And in fact, I think that that is a good thing to do as a partner at the very front end. I don't think that we need to fear backlash or punishment from this administration, from putting a strong foot forward now and saying that we want our role and our voice to be in writing. And, as I said, I've talked to many, many, many residents of Concord, I'm so grateful that they've reached out to me, still seeking the illusory one who doesn't want that. And so, that's what I'm committed to, because I think it's right on the merits, and because I think that's what the people of Concord want. The issue of background checks arises when there are statutory appointments by the governor. That's, to my understanding, not implicated by what we discussed in executive session today. However, I'll note that it is my interest to make sure that whatever happens with any formal process is expeditious, happens completely in a streamlined manner with other procedural operations that the DCAM and the Office of Inspector General and other arms of the state have to comply with during their normal course. And that's why I've shared what I shared with you, with the DCAM Commissioner, that he's talking with his internal team about that, running that by counsel, to ensure that, and that is, I think, in my short amount of time here in the legislature, I think it's, in some respects, unusual to try to have that kind of collaboration at the front end of this process, and I'm committed to doing that, too, to make sure that whatever formal result that is proposed is, does not have unintended consequences. We want our voice to be heard, we want a guarantee of that, is what I'm hearing from residents of our town. And that is something that I think should and will be embraced by the stakeholders in this, in this process. So, again, thank you so much. I know you are doing a lot of work, I know that you are getting a lot of input from residents, and a lot of input from me. I'm excited to work with my legislative colleagues to ensure that we get a great process and a great result, so that, as others have said, folks look at this as the Concord model in a really positive way moving forward in the future. Thanks for your time today with your meeting.
No, thank you. So, let's keep the ball rolling. Yes, okay, and...
I just want to comment very briefly and thank all the citizens who have written into all of us with some really excellent ideas, some very specific and well-thought-out ideas. We really will be reading those carefully and using them as we set up our local task force, which we are going to be doing as soon as possible over the next couple of weeks, because we really want to get started right away.
And some of those, some of the people who wrote those letters may actually be unfortunate enough to be victims of being appointed to this task force.
Yes.
Thank you very much, all three of you. All right, now we carry on with some of the more exciting items on our agenda, such as the public hearing for grant of, a grant of location request for Comcast for a poll petition, position.
Oh, we have to wait till 7 o'clock.
Oh, we do? Oh, sorry. Well, let's then, what else?
All of these are 7 o'clock.
They're all 7 o'clock.
Except for the town meeting articles.
Well, okay.
Or you can do public comment.
Okay, what?
It might.
Now, let's, well, we can, we have, the last time he sat here, a week ago, we started the hearings, the formal public hearings on all the warrant articles, and when we got to 10 o'clock, there were two that were left, which were held over to tonight. And so, we have materials in the package, I think, with regard to both of them. And is there anybody here to make a presentation on Article 41?
So, that's the DEI Commission's article, and there's been a lot of communications about the fact that they did not have availability to attend this particular meeting, so they're requesting that we continue that to another time.
Well, it was, let me ask if there's anyone here who came in order to speak on that issue, either on behalf of or in...
Yes, someone has.
Okay. Well, why don't we go forward with whoever has come here tonight? As we, it was very clear that we, at the meeting, at the beginning of the meeting last time, we said that if we ran beyond 10 o'clock, that the next, that the...
I really object to that. I think that it's, makes little sense in the, in the context of a public hearing about a town meeting article, to not have the proponent of the town meeting article present to discuss the article. The chairs were quite clear immediately after the adjournment of the last session that they were not available to present their article tonight. The DEI Commission organizes its work quite carefully, using subgroups, and they simply didn't have that availability, and there were multiple requests for an alternative time. So, I think we need to consider that and adjust and move on to the next.
Is there anybody who came here tonight to speak on that issue, which would not preclude us from continuing the discussion to some other time?
I think the proponents should be allowed to speak at our next meeting, if they're available.
Well, they may be, but is anybody who's come tonight, who wants, who came relying on the fact that this has been on the agenda, who've come tonight, who wishes to speak, we should hear them, and then we will decide whether or not we will have time at a later occasion before we have to submit our recommendations for publication in the FINCOM report, so that the proponents can be heard. But their materials are in the package for tonight, as they were for last week. Nancy, did you, you've kind of been hesitating.
I can't come to the meeting, it's Monday, so I...
Okay. Yeah.
No, you're different, Nancy. She's a, yeah, sorry.
I really appreciate it, and normally, I would understand that, so it's not that, but I didn't know, and I came, I waited last meeting for two hours, and so I think this is fair.
Okay.
Okay, so I am a member of the Historical Commission, but I am speaking for myself. And I also want to say that a few meetings ago, Mark How, the liaison to the DEI Commission, and Joe Palumbo, one of the co-chairs, came to the Historical Commission and asked if there would be an informal liaison to come to the DEI Commission, so I have been doing that, I've been doing my due diligence. And I just want to say that I, I really appreciate all the work that the DEI Commission does. This is nothing about that, what, to me, this is about is another task force. We have so many task forces in our town, and that's one of the problems. A task force for this are, the, no one from DEI has come to our commission to talk about the warrant articles, ever. We've had a few informal meetings with, you know, two people without being quorum, but no one from the DEI Commission has come and spoken to all of us as a group. And so, all of a sudden, it's going, you know, it's going to be, it's coming up on town meeting, and at the last DEI meeting, they even announced that they cannot come to our next public hearing, the Historical Commission's hearing, because they have other commitments, just like they have other commitments tonight. I know one person is at another meeting tonight, that's why they're not here. So, that's not our problem, we invited them to another meeting where they didn't come. So, I feel like there just hasn't been enough opportunity for whatever they are, want to discuss or have changed, they haven't even come to our committee to discuss it. So, we don't even know what to say about it, because we haven't been given an opportunity to have a discussion. They did have a discussion with the, a very good discussion, that I listened to, with the Historic District Commission, it was very fruitful. One of the things that, another thing that the DEI Commission, when I go, their commission, when I go and hear their meetings, is they brought this warrant article as sort of an example, they chose our commission, and Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to misrepresent anyone, that they, they think that really, the issues that they're concerned about, about making all town commissions inclusive and equitable, they want really all committees, town committees, to follow certain guidelines and guidance, and they have explicitly said that the, they've chose these two commissions as an example, sort of as a testing ground, I think they even use those words. So, from my point of view, what would be really great is if the, if the DEI Commission would write a booklet, a guidance booklet, rather than bringing this to town meeting, why couldn't they just write a good booklet that, because we'd all, we can all use that, that would give guidance to all committees in towns and task forces, anyone who's running meetings, just, you know, just their tidbits about what they recommend, so that we are, we're all on the same page. One of the big issues that they, well, it's actually a small issue, one of the things when we asked, when I asked at one of their meetings, what is it that you want us to change, they pulled up a document from 1985, and it had things like chairman in. And so, they said, yeah, we want to change the language of chairman to just chair. Well, I think all across the board in town, we've all done that since 1985. Well, I think all across the board in town, we've all done that since 1985, especially in 2023. I hope we have. So I support that. And they haven't really come to us, they haven't given us any documentation about what they want us to change. So we are really in the dark, and I think it would, it would be really very simple if they just give us a, you know, a written document, so that at least we knew what we were talking about. And I just think it's, it's inappropriate to bring it to town meeting before we ourselves have had a chance to talk about it with them at our commission. That's all. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the issue is not whether they can bring it to town meeting, because it is on the warrant. The question before us is whether or not we recommend that the town vote in favor or not in favor, or we make no recommendation on it.
Okay, I understand that. Yeah, thank you.
But thank you for coming and sitting through two hours at our last hearing.
It's my pleasure. You guys are great to listen to, and thank you for your, all of your work.
And if you're here for the wrong reason tonight, that's fine. Another Nancy, yes?
Nancy Nelson. I live at 1695 Lowell Road. I'm a member of the Concord Historical Commission, and tonight I'm speaking for myself, and the previous speaker probably overlaps a lot with what I was going to say, so I'll be short. I have three, three points, actually, questions about this article that I wish that the DEI folks were represented here tonight. One is how is this not redundant? And the reason I ask that question is because the Historical Commission is now in a major process to update the town's historic preservation plan. And explicitly in part, it will identify, document, preserve, and promote the historical resources with diverse minority, ethnic, social, and cultural groups which played a role in Concord's history. Importantly, it will also review the administrative code, charter, goals, objectives, et cetera, of the Concord Historical Commission. So to Nancy's point, and Simon maybe made this point too, Bob Gross once said that Concord was famous or infamous for its committees way before the revolution. And I'm wondering, why is this one necessary? The other is, why is it so narrowly defined? Only two commissions are involved, and there are dozens of committees and commissions, many of which, to my way of thinking, would have direct impact on the goals and the concerns of the DEI committee. So that is, that is another question. And the last one, which is particularly bewildering, as Nancy said, but I think it deserves emphasis, why was there no consultation about this? They have never come to the commission as a whole. There have been side conversations. I don't mean side conversations, but only with chairs. Sorry, Alan. So this is, you know, a better process might be for the Select Board to develop a broader policy statement that would imply to all our boards, committees, and commissions to further and be cognizant of the goals of the DEI Commission. My final thought is that I'm still, you might be able to tell, this is bewildering to me, how this, how this came as a town meeting article. I know town meeting is a bully pulpit. You can reach a lot of people. But some of us have been thinking about these issues for decades and decades. I dare say maybe before some other people on our commissions these days were even born. So I think we share common goals, and I hope we'll be able to work more collaboratively in the future. And I, I would, if you want a recommendation, I would recommend no action if that's still, that's what you said, right? That that's still, you have not taken your final position on, on your positions for the articles. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that no action might be appropriate. Wait until somebody knows what the problems are and whether or not they can be fixed without town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, what does the board want to do at this point?
Well, I guess if there are no other comments on this particular article.
Oh, well, there is one more. Mr. Feely.
I'm not on either, Rich Feely, 347 Lexington Road. I'm not on either committee, but I, as a voter, share the same concerns that we've just heard. I don't see anything put forward that shows that our attitude towards our history is not evolving as it inevitably will. If you look at the exhibit at the museum, if you look at the Robbins House, you look at our discussion about Ellen Garrison and naming the school, I think we've come a long ways. And history is always evolving, evolving, and I don't see any evidence that we're not. And the commissions work hard. As someone who's applying to the Historic Districts Commission, they got enough work to do without having to do this, and I don't see any way in which they are not being inclusive. So I would urge a no-action vote unless the group can come forward with concrete evidence to show the voters that we're not evolving as one would expect in a more informed and more equal society. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? I was, before we go on any further about how we're going to deal with this, I was, I am struck by the fact that the information that's given to us is the reason they could not be here tonight is that they weren't at another meeting.
That wasn't necessarily, I mean, I appreciate that somebody said that. However, the proponents of this article communicated clearly that they did not have availability as soon as the continuation date was announced. And I believe we should have responded directly to that and attempted to schedule. My feeling about what we do now is we still have to continue this, which will give anybody and everybody another opportunity to talk about it once we've heard the proponents of this article actually give us what the status is. I, I'm aware that there is work going on in this area. I'm not going to attempt to represent somebody else's work for them, and I think we need to allow that to happen.
What do you want to do?
Well, I agree. I think the proponent of the article needs to have a chance to make their presentation. And that should be at our very next meeting, which is March 18th. So I think we should continue it until then, and at that point, the public would have a right to ask questions and speak again.
I would not like to, I would not like to ask the people who spoke tonight to come back again to accommodate the people who did not show up tonight.
Well, I agree with that.
And so I would, if you, if you want to do that, I would like the, the clerk to send the minutes, or those portions of the minutes that deal with the discussion that came up tonight, and ask the proponents of this article to be prepared to respond to the remarks and questions that were made tonight.
Great. That's great. Let's do that.
Nancy? Yeah, that, this Nancy. Huh? You don't want to get yourself, you say?
I don't want to get myself in trouble.
I don't know how you can do that.
But I find myself getting into trouble. Listen, they have co-chairs on that commission. I don't know where that other person is. And this has happened before. Yeah, and they, you know, we've invited them to a meeting. They didn't come to the meeting. They are not, we've invited the, they've already said that they can't come to the next Historical Commission meeting. So they're not carving out time. They've come and brought forth an article about our commission, but they haven't carved out time to talk to us.
I think that's a really valid point.
I'll stop.
I think that's an incredibly valid point. I'm really glad you brought it up. But the problem that we're having is, we have a warrant, and we have public hearings.
Yeah.
And our meeting ran so long that it's not anybody's fault, but the scheduling just didn't work out, so the proponent has not had a chance to have a public hearing. And I think we have to give them that chance. That's what I'm saying.
Is that what the board thinks?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so let's, so let's, let's do that. I mean, it is, we.
March 18th.
And we should not overemphasize the value of our time in trouble in dealing with these things, because that's the nature of our life.
It has to be. I think it has to be March 18th, because we've got to have our recommendations.
And if they can't make it that day, that, you know, that's the last chance. We have to. So let's move to continue, you know, we have to move to continue the public hearing for Article 41 to March 18th.
Subject to the conditions that I have expressed, namely that they provide, be provided with the section of the minutes from the discussion tonight and come prepared to respond.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. All of, for those who, who showed up tonight, you know, as Woody Allen said, that's half the battle, right? Woody Allen said, showing up is half the battle, and the other half of the battle is looking good, so you did both.
Article 42?
Article 42. That sounds like the Korean War, doesn't it?
It's the meaning of life.
Oh, I mean, you're right.
It is.
Okay, so Mr. Carmody, are you going to explain to us the meaning of life?
I, I think, you know, we've, we've embodied the Woody Allen spirit, so we're here, the battle is, is done. But thank you, Mr. Sherman. So good evening. My name is Chris Carmody. I'm the Risk and Compliance Manager for the town. I also currently serve as the town's legislative aide. My colleague Beth Williams, the Tourism Manager, prepared this warrant article, Article 42. She wanted to be here tonight, but she's presenting at the Concord 2025 Executive Committee meeting now at the library. If she was here, I'm sure she'd be promoting the 250th website, which can be found at visitconcord.org/concord/250. Article 42 and the annual town meeting warrant this year seeks to amend the original tourist bylaw from 1905. Those proposed changes are administrative in nature and serve to bring the bylaw up to date with the town's current needs. The proposed bylaw changes expand the regulation of town tours from carriages to walking tours, bus tours, and other vehicular tours. The proposed changes are not meant to be more or less restrictive, just more relevant. For those interested, the municipal archivist has completed the digitization of the 1906 Annual Town Report, and it's accessible to the public online, including references to the town committee, which recommended the original adoption of the tourist bylaw. I'll take any questions now, and those that I can't answer, I will record for the tourism manager.
I have a question. Thanks, Chris, for being here to present this. I noticed in the copy that was in our packet that there still seems to be, there was some of the narrative that was stricken and new narrative put in bold. In paragraph two, I believe, under the bylaw amendment itself, is still a reference to the Select Board man, which didn't get struck. That's one thing. The other thing is that I, also there was, in this, the line that talks about providing, in, in bold, there's reference to provide the service, et cetera, et cetera. And the word just before that, use, probably should have been struck as well. And then I'll finish up with a question about whether town council is seeing this.
I believe town council has approved it, but I, I need to double-check that. I will definitely make a note of your comments and recommend perhaps some changes to the motion for, for town meeting.
Just for its completeness and, and the full intention of what was, wanted to be accomplished in this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to speak in favor or not of this proposal? I won't, good, then we can move. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for showing up. That is half the battle, yes. So, so now we have passed seven o'clock.
Move to close, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
No, to continue.
We have to open up and.
No, no, but we need to continue it with regard to.
Oh, that's right, to continue the public hearing to March 18th.
We already did that.
We did.
They did, okay. All right, so now we are going to jump into the public hearing. Public hearing scheduled at 7:00 for grants of location and et cetera. Is there anybody?
I need to move to open public hearing.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Moved, moved to open the public hearing for a grant of location request for Comcast for a poll petition at 56 Winthrop Street.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Howell?
Aye.
We can just say, all, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Is there any here, anyone here, here or there to present?
Kathy Maloney. Kathy, are you on Zoom?
Oh, there she is.
There she is.
Can you unmute Kathy? Kathy, you're muted. Or maybe we are having. Say something.
We can't hear you.
She's going to call in.
This technology, wonderful.
Can we just maybe have somebody else on Zoom speak up just to make sure that we're getting an audio feed from the Zoom meeting?
We have, what, three of those? Well, why don't we move to the, here, I know, why don't we move to the.
Stephen Ducrene, can you just say something out loud so we can check to hear, if we can hear you?
Yes, is this Steve Ducrene?
Great, thank you.
Good. Can you put him on full screen for us, please? What?
We just wanted to double-check to make sure that we could actually hear somebody coming through Zoom, because we haven't had anybody on.
Right. So you want to go to the next one?
Well, if we can't get the presenter for the, for, what is it, National Grid?
It's just Comcast.
And let's just go to.
She was Comcast, so maybe National Grid is here.
Is National, are you here, National Grid?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is Mary Maloney. I'm from National Grid.
Well, wait a minute, I think we have to, do we have to vote to open this hearing? It's a different hearing.
We do.
Okay, hold on, and we'll open the hearing.
Moved to open the public hearing for a grant of location request for a gas main petition for National Grid at 47 Davis Court.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're on.
Good evening. National Grid respectfully request your consent to comply with the town of Concord's road reconstruction for number nine to 47 Davis Court in Concord. National Grid recommends the relay of approximately 470 feet of two-inch coated steel dating back to the 1930s and replacing it with 470 feet of two-inch plastic in Davis Court from Bedford Street to House Number 47 Davis Court.
I have a question. So what, what's triggering this?
The, the town is going to do total reconstruction of that street in the spring, and National Grid, that main is extremely old. And obviously, we don't like to go in afterwards, and with heavy equipment with the paving and so forth and so on, sometimes it can aggravate the old pipe. So the town could essentially take up brand-new pavement. And then, you know, a month later, or three months later, it could be an odor of gas that would be an emergency, and we'd have to go and dig up Brando Street, which we don't like to be, are proactive with the town engineers. And they provide a list of, of what's being paved, and we try to accomplish the goal of getting in and out beforehand.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I noticed that the grant of location expiration date is May 30th, 2024. Is National Grid. May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Is National Grid committed and prepared to complete the work by then, and if so, when would it start?
If the grant was approved tonight, and National Grid would apply for the permit, and then it would be the Town of Concord engineer that would decide, you know, when the permit was issued, when we could start, and, yes, it would be in as soon as they can. I think Mr. Ducrene is on the call as well.
I have a question. Is National Grid prepared to accept all the conditions, thirteen conditions spelled out by the DPW and Stephen Ducrene in this memo dated January?
When was the memo issued? What date was on it?
January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
I, I did not receive a copy of that memo.
Okay, well.
But applying, but when you, the grant is permission to apply for a permit, so with that, keep in mind that those details of the memo would be in place when we were applying for the permit, and it would be discussed.
The permit will, no doubt, contain all the conditions.
I understand that, but I want to know that.
Can I, Mr. Chair, I can help with that?
Thank you, Stephen.
Yeah, we did. The Engineering Division did send to National Grid this copy of this memo. They contain conditions that we've discussed with them over a period in excess of a year, and we have come to agreement. They haven't given us any feedback on the memo. Apparently, they haven't shared it with Ms. Maloney, but seeing that we haven't gotten any feedback, we presume that they are in agreement with all the conditions.
Okay, right, so I would like to know before I vote whether National Grid is accepting these conditions, and it seems unclear to me whether they are accepting the conditions.
Right. And the other thing I want to add is that we have monthly meetings with National Grid. We meet with a number of their staff, and the last one was just this past Friday. We talk about all the projects, so I think we are guaranteed that, that they don't have a problem with these conditions. We don't have that in writing, but, you know, after all the meetings we've had with them, I think we are pretty sure that they're okay with this, and we do want us to move ahead. Paving of Davis Court is overdue. It's been, for the last few years, we've worked with National Grid to settle on these conditions so that we can get some projects going. And according to what Mary was saying just now, if we pave the street, it goes into a five-year moratorium, and then anyone who wants to cut into a street that's within five years, they will have to demonstrate, you know, the hardship before we allow them to cut into the street.
So it sounds to me, Stephen, that you have written this memo, and you understand what's needed, but I would like to hear confirmation from National Grid. I mean, you're talking about abandoned gas mains, traffic control plan. I think they need to agree to all of this, at least before I can vote for it.
I would say all these conditions have become pretty standard.
Right.
Yeah, I think you saw, you saw one recently on Simon Willard. These were pretty much the same conditions when that one was approved.
Correct. However, I do remember recently that National Grid did not comply with some conditions, and they had to come back to the board, and I can't remember which project, there were several projects, though, and I really want to avoid that situation.
So couldn't we grant the location subject to agreement from all parties to all of the conditions as presented in the memo tonight, and so if they, if for some reason there's disagreement later about compliance with the conditions, the permit wouldn't be issued?
We could make it much more simple than that, to just have the permit issued subject to the conditions imposed by Department of Public Works.
That's, that's what I was suggesting.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a couple of people who appear to want to comment on this, one on Zoom and one at the microphone.
Shall I go first?
Please.
I'm Bill Kermaza, and I'm at twenty-eight Davis Court. Some of my questions have been answered already. When was this going to occur, and is it going to be in coordination with DPW on the resurfacing of the road? The other one, other ones I want to mention, though, we've had wires come down on Davis Court even last winter, and I'm wondering if there's an opportunity with the repaving of the road and the digging of trenches to consider putting them below the surface on the, on the, on the street. It's just around the corner. I don't know how that works, that's one thing. The second thing is, neighbors have asked whether National Grid will need to tear up their lawns to connect the, the gas main to the, to their houses, and I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. And finally, I've been on the, I've been on that street for forty-three years, and we're blessed again with lots of children, so I want to also suggest that there's a safety concern. There's at least ten, fifteen young kids out there now on bikes and on scooters, and I'd like to see that sort of reflected in, in maybe one of the conditions that they're aware of the safety issues on, on this very narrow street. That's it.
Thank you. Steve, do you have any comments on that?
The first one on the wires going underground, that's really up to the municipal light plant. We have always approached them regarding requests from residents, and I think it has to do with their capital planning, their available funds and so on. So we can't speak on their behalf. However, with all projects, we hold neighborhood meetings, meet out there with the residents, and we discuss all the issues. The folks from the light plant are invited, so those issues can be brought up, and if they can squeeze in the conduits before we pave the street, we certainly will allow them to do so. I don't know, of the safety issues, again, we will have the neighborhood meeting. They can bring up all the issues, and we, we will try to address those during that neighborhood meeting. And National Grid too will hold a separate neighborhood meeting, and so regarding the question about connecting their, their service lines within the properties, they can address that, because that's outside of the right-of-way, and it's up to National Grid to determine whether those service lines need to be replaced or not.
So I have another question about that.
Do we have another?
Comment.
Okay, then I have another question after.
Okay, yeah, is this Barbara Lyons?
Barbara Lynn Davis, also on Davis Court.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, hi. Bill anticipated my concern about tearing up any of our front gardens, and I'm, I'm just concerned because about, I don't know, maybe a year and a half ago, a couple guys from National Grid showed up at my front door and said that they needed to connect something to something, and it turned out that they needed to basically, like, dig up, you know, a lot of my little front garden, which is filled with all kinds of perennials and old roses, and of course, I went very ballistic, very upset, and said no ultimately. So I just want to make sure that that's not part of this plan, because while they're little poster-stamped size, they're very dear to us, our little front areas.
Maybe Ms. Maloney has a response to that?
Surely. National Grid respects your property, and some houses will have to have a new service put into them, some won't, but in doing so, they will probably go in place of, of where the old line is going into your house, and they, they are very careful with their lawns and bushes, flowers, and so forth and so on. And if something did get damaged, you know, they would make sure that it was whole.
Well, I got the impression that there was really no way for them to accomplish their goals without, in my case at least, losing a lot of old, beautiful shrubs, you know, ten-foot-tall hydrangeas kind of thing, and so I guess I'm wondering whether we have any choice as homeowners, maybe to say, like, it's not worth it to us, you know? I don't know. I'm not even saying that would be my position, but I was alarmed. I don't know if I'm ready for that.
So are you the, the first house on the left-hand side coming down when you entered Davis Court from Bedford?
No.
On the right or the left?
Third house on the left.
Okay. You know, the, the gas main is from nineteen-thirty, and I understand, they make, I mean, if it's, if it's a rose bush that needs some attention, they could probably dig it out, keep it alive somewhere, and then put it back in. They do make every effort, that, I know they do. They're there for the customer.
I have a question.
Well, I guess I would just want to say to the Select Board, just to be thinking that, I'm not saying it's, I'm saying no or anything, I'm just saying that it's not necessarily always the best idea, just to sort of, yes, the road is open, let's do it. I just think we ought to consider the people on the street and what they really want and need, and what they might lose.
So can, can I direct a question to Steve on this? You know, is there any mitigation that's allowed for when something is dug up that is significant?
Again, we in Public Works, we're in charge of what's within the right-of-way. Outside of the right-of-way is the private property. You know, we can control where National Grid needs to connect their lines. It will be, you know, it would be fortunate if they can find that the service lines on the private property are in good shape, so they don't have to replace them and dig up shrubs and what have you. They can move forward the project and just do the main. It's a leaky main or leak-prone main, replace that line and connect back to the old service lines, service connections, until they find a better location to route the service connections. Where National Grid meets out there with the neighbors, they can discuss all the options available to them.
Thank you.
Steve, when will that, do you know when that meeting will take place?
So we want to fast-track this because we want to pave this, you know, late summer, early spring, the street, and we have a lot of paving to accomplish this year. So I think if National Grid gets this, this approval tonight, I believe they can get a meeting out there within the next two weeks.
How, I guess, how will the, how will the neighbors be notified?
National Grid is responsible.
Okay.
You know, inviting the neighbors, either doing door hangers, or sending letters, or postcards, or something like that.
Thank you.
And what happens if this project does not finish by May thirtieth?
Well, it's, we want to push them to get it done so that we can pave the street. It doesn't mean that we can't extend it if, if we have other circumstances, you know, that we deal with, but we have to put a schedule in all our work, because if we let things drag on, they never get done.
Right, but.
Yeah.
This says that it will, this grant of location will expire on May thirtieth, and I'm just thinking what happened on Commonwealth Ave last summer, and it's already March. It just seems like it could easily go past May thirtieth, and so I'm not really.
That's a good problem.
Well, what happens?
It's a delay in the paving project.
And, right, so then do they have to come back and get another permit from the Select Board again?
That would be the case. Either they, they don't move forward with it and, you know, put it off after we get the street paved five years down the road, or they can demonstrate hardship during the moratorium period. They can do that as well and, and replace the gas main during that moratorium period. We have to put a date for them, otherwise they let it drag. These gas projects on these smaller roads, they go pretty fast. You know, there aren't too many underground utilities to deal with, and there isn't a lot of traffic to deal with, so they can go, you know, a lot more quickly than, say, a drainage project or a project on a, on a major street. So we, we think this, this timeline is doable, and we want to push it so that they can get it done, so we can get all things done. As I said, it's been a couple of years since the paving on Davis Court got deferred.
Good. Are we ready to close the public hearing?
Yep.
Yeah.
Were you asking?
I move to approve the grant of location request for a gas main petition for National.
Oh, we need to close the.
Oh, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Move to approve the grant of location request for a gas main petition for National Grid at forty-seven Davis Court in accordance with the.
Subject, yes.
Subject to.
The conditions.
Infested by the Department of Public Works.
Right, in a memo of January twenty-ninth.
In accordance with the conditions provided by the Concord Public Works, in a memo dated January twenty-ninth.
Good. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
I vote no.
You voted no, okay. We, sorry, we have a three, is that three votes in favor, one vote opposed?
Four to one.
Four to one, okay. Now we move on to, should we go back?
Yes.
Try to go back to.
Thank you for your time.
Is Kathy Maloney there and on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Can you, now we have to vote to open that hearing, right?
We already opened it. We never closed it.
It's already open?
We did, we never closed it.
Okay, good. Well, don't have to vote to keep it open?
Right.
Okay, good. Go ahead, or please proceed.
Good evening.
As you, as you choose.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks so much. Sorry for the earlier problem. Appreciate your time this evening. First, we have a petition for a grant of location for fifty-six Winthrop Street, and specifically, the construction under this order would be in accordance with the following conditions, that being overlap an additional cable to the existing Comcast network from utility pole number twenty-three Commonwealth Ave to utility pole number five dash two on Winthrop Street, and this request is being made in order to provide service to the occupants of fifty-six Winthrop Street and the two streets that would be passed would be Commonwealth Avenue and Winthrop Street, and as always, all work will be done in accordance with the town's order of conditions. Let's see. That's all I have, unless you have any questions on that one.
Any questions or comments on fifty-six Winthrop Street? All right, then, is, these have to be separate hearings?
Apparently.
They do.
Well, they're separate grants of locations.
But they're two different locations, so if there are no comments or questions about fifty-six Winthrop Street, we could then close that hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
What about, we want to get a vote for them one at a time, too?
Move to approve the grant of location request for Comcast for a pole petition at fifty-six Winthrop Street in accordance with the conditions provided by Concord Public Works and Concord Municipal Light Plant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, now moving to.
Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location request for Comcast for a pole petition at eight-three-five Old Marlborough Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Catherine?
Thank you. This, thank you very much. This is a, for a grant of location request for a location at the Sanborn, the New Sanborn Middle School, and this would have us placing new strand and cable from utility pole seventy to utility pole seventy-six on Old Marlborough Road, and from that pole, we'll be going underground with the existing conduit. That is not our conduit, but we're allowed to use it. It's provided by the contractor for the school project. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions on the New Sanborn Middle School request.
Yeah, I had a comment on it. I think that referring to this building as the New Sanborn Middle School is.
Problematic.
Somewhat inaccurate, so.
Oh, okay.
Recognizing that there's a.
We don't need to do that.
There's a new school. There's a new school building being built at, at that site. And I think it has its own address now.
Isn't it eight-three-five Old Marlborough Road?
Eight-three-five is the old building. I think the new building is, I'm looking for it because I think it was in there.
Is it seventy-six? Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the pole number. Let's see. Eight-three-five Old Marlborough Road is the address I have on here.
Do you think it's sufficient if we just say the new middle school?
Yeah, just, just recognize that we're talking about nine-twenty-three Old Marlborough Road is the actual street address.
Great.
Of the new building under construction to become Concord Middle School.
Great. Thank you.
Does that need the, um, application to be amended?
Yeah, I, I'm going to ju, well, I'm going to suggest that the applicant just simply revise the documentation to refer to it as the school building at nine-twenty-three Old Marlborough Road, as long as we know what we're talking about.
Excellent, let's do that.
Good.
Okay. Uh, are there any further comments on this? Up or down, yea or nay? Are you just moving to the exit, or?
It's right behind my house.
Okay.
My name is Susan Riley.
Could you, somebody lower the microphone, her, please, somebody. You had that lowered by an IT expert, by the way.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to know how we can get more information on this sort of thing. I live on Deacon Haynes, so it's right behind our house. And so we got this in the mail today and we came to the meeting just to get more information on it. And anyway, we're having trouble getting information on what's going on with the new middle schools.
I, I think they, they need to publish a public notice of this in the local newspaper some specified time in advance, which is at least a week or two, isn't it?
I did get this in the mail. So somebody did send something to me.
So just to clarify, you would like more information about this particular project that you've been notified about, or the middle school project in general?
Probably both, but I came to the meeting for this particular one.
All right, and do you have a specific question, or would you just like it explained in more detail?
I think I would just like any information we can get on it so I could ask an intelligent question.
Okay.
So, it is right behind our house.
Yeah.
And so we just see things going up and happening and.
Yeah, could we pull up page fifty-eight of the packet? We're gonna put something on the screen for you.
Okay. Like, we have seen them out there a couple of months ago. We went out to talk to them, but, you know, they were... They said they were just looking at the feasibility of it at the time. And then we got this notice, and that was it.
There you go.
So, um.
That's the type of saying, yes, we would, yeah. Can we get copies?
So I, I guess we could ask the Comcast representative to explain the project using this guide as a map? Or this, this diagram from the package?
I'm sorry, when that came up tonight, she wasn't here.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. Um, so today we are providing service to the school, um, off of a pole which is happens to be number seventy-one on Old Marlborough Road. To accommodate the project, we need to relocate our service to be able to come in a little bit further down the road, uh, off, specifically off of pole number seventy-six, and to bring our service in that way to accommodate the new building.
So the wires that currently provide Comcast service to the existing Sanborn School will be extended about five poles further down so that they can then intersect with conduit which will bring those wires into the new middle school.
And that will be on the same side of the street then?
That's right.
That's right.
So it's on the school side of the street, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I believe there was a comment in the package that, is it an underground connection from pole seventy-six to, through to the, so there'll, there'll be some excavation so that they can trench across the road. But that will just be.
And the pipe is already in place, I, I believe.
It's conduit, right.
I believe the pipe is already there.
Good, great.
Okay, so it'll, there'll be some excavation.
Well, uh, what, what the representative from Comcast just said is that the conduit, the pipe, that the wire's going to go through is already underneath the road, so there won't be any new digging of Old Marlborough Road in order to do this project. Does that answer your question?
Yes, when they started the project, they used vibrating rollers for the parking lot, and it really shook our house. So I want to make sure. So we decided to be kind of more interested in what was going on.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, just adjusting the microphone, or are you gonna say something?
I'm also, I'm also, thank you.
Well, we need to close.
Well.
Well, no, this is, I'm speaking on this.
Talking about this, this, this application, yes.
Yes, yes, so as interim director of the light plant, I gave Jeff, Jeff Kozro of the night off, and I just wanted to relay his, uh, his sentiments on this, but that they have written a memo that's in your packet that supports this particular, uh, project. And Mark did a great job explaining it, but the conduit that's in the road is already there. It's been laid by the contractor for the school, and it's just a simple extension of the poles. They met with them out there, and they had no issues or concerns. So I just wanted to relay that.
Thank you. All right.
Move to, move to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the grant of location request for Comcast for a pole petition at nine-two-three Old Marlborough Road, also known as, uh, the new school site, in addition with the conditions provided by Concord Public Works and Concord Municipal Light Plant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. Now, have we any public hearings left?
Yep.
There we do.
One more, which is.
Jason.
Cable. Move to open the public hearing for a community cable needs assessment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi again, um, I'd like to ask the chair to recognize Sue Buskey from the Buskey Group, who's on Zoom from California.
She's from.
I don't see her up there.
I don't see her.
I see the Buskey Group, it's in small, far.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Right below Vince. Sue, can you hear us?
Next time we meet here, I'm gonna bring binoculars so I can read that, that screen.
Shannon, can you make a request to unmute Sue? Okay, okay, thank you. I can start.
Okay.
In Sue's absence, and then she can jump in. So we are here tonight basically to inform the select board of the process that's been undergoing for the last year-plus. As you know, we have a ten-year agreement with Comcast, a franchise agreement. And, uh, prior to the expiration of that, we need to negotiate a new contract with them. So the process that we have is that the DPU requires Comcast to file, uh, an offer. And, uh, then the select board needs to weigh in on either to accept or reject that offer. While this is going on, we're also conducting a needs assessment of all the things that the community thinks that they would like in this franchise agreement. And we are also meeting informally with Comcast to express the things that we're looking for and look at other recent franchise agreements that have been, uh, voted and approved in other communities to see what other people are getting. So you end up with two parallel processes. One, that's a formal process where Comcast submits something and we have to take action. And a second, which is informal. So we're here tonight to allow Sue the opportunity to present the results of the needs assessment. And in your packet, there's a very long PowerPoint presentation that we encouraged Sue not to deliver. And instead, she wrote a very short memo that outlines some of the needs that the community was looking for.
Thank you very much for that.
Yes. So some of the needs include things like, uh, for example, an electronic programming guide that would allow people to see what is actually on the public access channels as opposed to, um, you know, just, uh, like every other channel, they get, they know what's on those, but the public access channels, there's no information. Um, other things would include increasing the quality of the channels that we have, um, from standard definition to high definition, so that pictures look crisper, text is easier to see on the screen. Um, and then things like, uh, capital money to improve the equipment. Things like these microphones and, uh, projectors and cameras and all the equipment at the head-end at the high school that we use to broadcast, uh, television. So, um, that is the process, and those are the types of things that we negotiate on. And in the needs assessment, it was very clear that the community was looking for, um, the ability for an electronic programming guide. They were looking for enough capital money so that they, we could sustain the operations of Minuteman Media. And so they, they took all this and put it in this report. So basically, what we're trying to do today is to educate the board and the public on what the needs assessment contained so that in a coming, upcoming meeting, you guys can make a deci, an educated decision on whether or not to accept Comcast's formal negotiation, uh, with the understanding that we are negotiating currently a probably more favorable agreement on the side. So the process would be, um, deliver on the needs assessment and explain what that is. Second, um, vote to accept or reject the Comcast offer. Third, if we're rejecting it because the offer, the current contract expires in April, we need to extend that for a period of time while we continue negotiations. And then eventually, we'd be bringing the select board, uh, a final contract that we'd recommend, and then vote to approve that, and that would become the new contract for a ten-year period. Does that make sense? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so if Sue is not able to talk, Sue, are you still not able to talk? Apparently not able to talk. Um, then I would just ask if the select board has any questions about the needs assessment or the presentation that was in your packet, or if the public has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I, I have questions, and, um, I heard you say that part of the process was to look at some of the, um, what some of the other communities have asked for and so forth, and that provides some basis for determining how you're going to proceed with articulating our needs and so forth. How realistic is it that some of the recommendations that were outlined in at least the material we saw, um, could be filled? And then the other, um, this is a technical question. The terminology is used, "technology-caused isolation." I, I just want to make sure I understand what that means. Uh, and, um, and I'm also curious about, I did, I, I saw concerns of, or at least laying out, um, the fact that we have a growing senior population, but I didn't see any recommendations actually articulated specific to that. So I gave you a lot, but help me out here.
Yes, um, so I'll start with the last one first. So the senior population, there were definitely people representing that population at the needs assessments, uh, meetings that we had with the community forum meetings. And then participants of the survey results that are summarized in the packet, you'll see people expressing the desire to make sure that that programming extends to that population. So I can tell you, we work very closely with the Council on Aging today and are hoping to make a capital investment for that facility to make sure that they have, uh, listening-assisted devices, which we, we heard they just got a grant for, but also better coverage of events that take place there. I think that we, as people working in M M N, are constantly thinking about the demographics of the people that we serve and making sure that we have programming that suits all of Concordians. And so I think that part of it is for us as employees to make sure that we're tapping into those people and making sure that their interests are represented in the programming and the content that we both make and also broadcast. I'm happy to say that, um, one of our, uh, PEG Access Advisory Committee members' fathers just filmed, uh, two episodes of a woodworking show that's locally produced. Uh, he's a Concord resident. And so, um, we're, we're just super excited to start getting more of these shows on the air, locally-produced content that reflects the diversity and character of the town. Can you remind me of the other two?
Um, one was just helping me with the definitions, technology.
Hello, I finally got in.
Oh, is that Sue?
Yeah, I finally got in the phone.
Okay. Sue, can you help, um, the select board understand the definition of technology?
Caused isolation.
Is isolation?
Uh, uh, technology-caused.
Isolation.
Technology-caused, uh, isolation is basically a situation in where an individual or group are not able to have access to information because they do not have access to the technology in order to access that information.
Yeah, I was assuming that's what it was, but thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, which gets to the, the issue about the senior, addressing the senior population from a number of different directions in terms of their needs. Yeah, thank you.
What was your third, or your first rather?
How realistic.
Yeah, how realistic is that, some of the recommendations?
That's a good question. So I can tell you that we looked at recent contracts in Cambridge and Carlisle. Obviously, um, Cambridge has a little bit more leverage than Concord and Carlisle do, but there is language in their contracts that Comcast seems amenable to including in our contract. And I think that Carlisle's, uh, what they were able to get is very realistic for us to be able to get some of that language. We started from a point of our existing, uh, document, which actually has a lot of good things in it. So, um, I think that this is going to be a very favorable, uh, result for Concord.
And, and, you know, the equipment, it's, the equipment recommendation is that it could be implemented within a ten-year period. Well, if the need is now for that equipment.
Right.
Will that be come a negotiating point then?
Yes, so we, yeah, we can structure the capital payments however we want, you know, in, in terms of our request. In the current agreement, they're in lump sums. Um, so keep in mind that when Comcast provides a lump sum, they're actually borrowing that money and not only charging the capital money, but also the interest on that for the borrowing to essentially the rate payers who have Comcast service. So it's, it's to everyone's advantage to sort of spread out the payments over time. But the good news is we do have a fund balance at M M N, so we do have capital we can spend now. And also, this agreement will have some money paid in the first year, so.
Okay, thank you.
So I was gonna ask a question about the status of the fund balance as long as you're there.
Yes, so at the last hearing, the fund balance was around one-point-four million. Um, I will have an updated number at the next hearing on the twenty-first of March. I don't have it today. I've made a request to finance for the exact number, but with an accounting system transition, it's unclear for me how to get the exact number, but the town accountant is working on that. So for the enterprise hearing, we will have the accurate current fund balance. But it was one-point-four million, it's probably close to that now.
So it's a little unclear, have we received the formal contract offer from Comcast? And how far away is that from what we hope to accomplish in the informal negotiation?
The current offer from Comcast has been received. It is very similar to the existing agreement that we have in place. Um, so, you know, that would be the starting point. It will only get better from what we had already. Um, and I think that we'd be looking for the select board at the next meeting to basically take action on the offer that's already been received.
Okay. And with respect to the three PEG access channels, I, I noted that they're shared with Carlisle and that we would be approaching, apparently, having separate channels. Wouldn't that have a pretty substantial impact on the amount of equipment necessary if we had, out of M M N, to need to support twice as many channels for?
Yes, so in part, there, there's two pieces. The broadcast equipment that we have that sends the signal, and then there are encoders that then go out to each channel. So when they give us additional channels, they would be providing the encoders. It would just need to be our equipment that is capable of sending it to three additional channels, let's say, if we had six. Um, the equipment we have today is not capable of that, but our equipment today is thirteen years old, and we had a capital, um, expenditure this current fiscal year to replace that equipment. The new piece of equipment will be able to broadcast up to six channels, um, and then also live streaming services in other, other, um, locations. So we don't anticipate it being a problem for us in terms of our capability equipment.
You have, Carmen has a question.
Yes, Carmen?
Carmen.
Carmen, yes, you have your hand up?
Hi there, for recognizing me. Um, one of the things that it would be wonderful to have, um, as part of our cable TV service would be closed captioning, which exists on the other channels, but not on this one. Uh, not on the local access. And, and it, it would be particularly useful at, uh, at town meeting.
Yep, so the new equipment that I just mentioned that we're replacing our current broadcast equipment with has the capability to do live captioning. Um, captioning is interesting. It essentially sends it to a third party and then captions it and sends it back. And you get so many minutes per year of that. And so we're not committing that every single program that we do will have full captions, but that's our goal, is to get as many. but that's our goal is to get as many things captioned as we possibly can to make it accessible for anybody who's watching it. So we're still waiting to see, like roughly based on our programming and the captions that we have. Also, there are ways to get captions for free that you can embed in the, in the service. So we're just looking into all the possible ways we can do to increase captioning, but I agree, that would be great to have.
Anything else? Do you need anything, any action from us tonight or is this just information?
This is just information so that the board can make an educated decision to make sure that you understand what the community is looking for. And then at the next meeting, we'll mention again the current offer on the table, how we think it does not meet the needs of the community and make a recommendation to vote to reject that offer and then extend.
Do I understand the process is that, in fact, the usual routine is that the first offer gets formally rejected?
Yes.
As a, just as a procedural matter?
Because it's basically because of the timelines. There's not enough time to actually finish the negotiations before the deadline of when the contract expires. If Comcast started the process six months earlier, the DPU required something six months earlier, there might be more time. But for instance, Carlisle's was extended by two years, so it's not uncommon for them to be extended, but we're hoping for just six months or less that that would take.
Thanks.
So I don't think there's any other action required at this time if there's no other documents.
So will, will we see you in the next, on the 18th?
On the 18th, correct.
Well, we look forward to that.
Very good.
And that time, we'll see if we can have somebody else adjust the microphone, microphone for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Was it a public hearing?
There was.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was the public hearing on needs assessment and we don't have to approve it. All right, so that moves us on to discuss recommendations for annual, am I right, annual town meeting?
Yes. Yes, you're right.
And I believe that aside from the one item that we will have on our agenda for the 18th will be a continued and limited public hearing on Article 41. Will we be ready on the 18th to take positions on warrant articles?
Well, we will be ready for the ones that we were at.
That we have.
Our hearing.
Yes, at our hearing.
Yes.
So.
Well, there's also a hearing this Thursday, so there'll be.
That's right.
The FinCon is holding a hearing this Thursday, so they'll be doing all the budget articles. Town, town and school.
Yeah, and the planning board is holding a hearing on the 12th, so that will also have taken place.
But are we going to take positions on those articles as well?
Yeah, we take a position on all articles. We do.
Right.
That's a lot of work.
It is. Well, we can take no position, but we have to.
Yeah, but are we going to do all of that on the 18th?
Well, you're the chairman, you decide what you think we're ready for and we'll get as many as we can done.
What's the meeting after?
Well.
So we have to finish by the following meeting.
The select board meeting we could act on tonight.
We could.
Well, if you're, what do they say, the difficult, we do right away, the impossible takes a little bit longer?
Let's do the easy ones.
All right.
Tonight, right now.
Yeah, really?
Well, we only have two more opportunities, the 18th and the 25th.
All right, so do we have, let's get the list out.
Move that the select board recommend affirmative action on Article Four.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, so come on, I wasn't, I wasn't ready to embarrass, I wasn't ready to embarrass myself.
Is that the first one we heard?
Yes.
What about the first three? When do we do a recommendation on, oh no, we have to wait.
Well, we haven't heard the Finance Committee.
The, the one, two and three are, Carmen can help us out here, but I think they're unanimous consent or something like that. Well, meeting procedure we hear about at the Finance Committee article.
That's right.
One and two, we don't ever really do anything with. That's why four is first.
Come on with me, Henry, you're going to look through the articles?
Oh, in the book, all right.
So Mark is moving affirmative action on Article Four. Second, I'm seconding it.
Okay, now we get a vote on Article Four?
We do. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we, the select board recommend affirmative action on Article Five, ratify Personnel Board Classification and Compensation Plan.
Second. All in favor?
All in favor.
Yes, okay.
Aye.
Yeah, affirmative action, yeah.
Okay.
So, select board, we are now go to.
Move that the select board recommend affirmative action on Article Six, Personnel Bylaw Amendments.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one that we covered on the hearing was.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, which was the Select Board to Accept Easements.
Absolutely, that's great, I think.
Move that the Select Board recommend affirmative action on Article Eighteen, Select Board to Accept Easements.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Okay.
And the next one is Article Twenty-Two, Authorized New Middle School Name.
Are we ready to take position on this one?
No. Are we? I don't think, I, you know, we could discuss it, but I think it's, it falls within the province of the school committee and the town meeting does not have the authority to.
So our choices are affirmative action.
No action.
No action in the.
No position.
No position.
Or because we're writing the Finance Committee Report entries, we could also say that we were going to make a recommendation at town meeting.
Well, that's right, that's our fourth option.
That's right.
Well, it is, why do you? Well, do you want to put off the inevitable? I mean, I think that, I think we're in a position to vote on this at this point because we, the town meeting does not have the authority to do this, so I would.
That's your opinion, Henry.
Of course it's, well, I have no, I have nobody else's opinion but my own.
But that doesn't mean we're ready, because you have.
That's right, I'm ready, you're not.
Yeah, so I think the, the question is amongst the board members, is there anybody who's awaiting new information or more information before being ready to take a position?
Well, first of all, it's incorrect what we just said. The article says to determine whether the town will urge the Select Board and School Committee as outlined, da-da-da, to approve the naming.
That's right.
So it's just an urging article.
And why would we vote to urge ourselves to do something?
Because we want to do it.
Because we want to do it. Rather than just do it.
Because we want to do it.
If we got to urge ourselves to do it, why don't we just do it?
Okay, I want to be clear that what we're, we're not talking now about, do we think the town should have a vote on this? What we're, because the town does, because it's on the warrant.
Yes.
What we're discussing now is our own opinion about whether the name should be changed or not.
Yeah, and this is, this article as presented to us actually calls for two actions in my view. Action number one is to apply Town Policy and Procedure Number Forty-Three, which pertains to naming buildings. And the second part is to recommend or actually name, under that policy, it is the Select Board's responsibility to approve a name for a building. And this article is recommending that a specific name, Ellen Garrison Middle School, be the result of that action.
Well, it's not, it's asking the town to urge the Select Board and School Committee to name it.
Yeah.
Right, to urge to.
Urge us to do it, okay? So.
To approve naming.
Even if we wanted to do it, we wouldn't want to urge ourselves to do it.
Well, that's your opinion.
Of course it is. Of course it's my opinion, it's what I've been saying from the very beginning about this article.
I think what we want to do is we want to put ourselves in the position of a resident here and say, based on what we know about the town and of all the issues in the town and the relationship between the boards, what would, how would we vote as an informed citizen?
Okay.
Resident, resident. Forget citizen, resident. How, that, that to me is the question and I.
But the issue is not.
Can you state that again?
The issue is not what would the ordinary resident wish the school to be named. That is not, not the issue that's raised by this warrant article. It is not a vote on the name. It is a vote on the Select Board urging itself to do something that we have legal advice from our council and School Committee Council falls within the province of the School Committee by statute and that APP Forty-Three does not apply to the naming of the school.
I don't take it like that, I really don't.
Did we have that? We had to.
I would actually like to see that opinion.
Me too.
Which I have not seen.
Like the one from our council?
Yes.
We do not have it in writing, but it was given informally.
Well, that's not funny, we asked them.
But, but if, if it hasn't been written, then.
So wait, wait, so what you're saying, Mark, if I understand it correctly is, the first part of this is, do we think, do we recommend that we use APP Forty-Three? And if we do, then do we think we should name, rename this?
Well, I'm just, I'm just reading the, the actual article and of course, we.
We haven't seen the motion.
We haven't seen the motion and I think, as an aside, I'd like to come back to how these hearings were conducted because I think it is really problematic that we have had presentations on so many articles without actually seeing a proposed motion, because the motion is the action that we're taking. And to ask people to come up and talk about what they're going to present later puts us in a very difficult position because we really don't know exactly what's going to be moved.
We do have the motion though in the warrant. Is it this, the motion?
No, we, we have an article in the warrant, that's what, I mean, I, I saw at least one former moderator who used to quite quickly remind people that, or take any other action relative thereto should never appear in a motion.
Okay, so I think what you're saying, Mark, then is that we can't really take a position on this until we see the motion.
Well, what I'm saying is that this particular article actually does, as written, it's saying, apply APP Forty-Three and come up with a particular outcome from the result of applying APP Forty-Three. And I think that that is challenging of the, in the least.
Yeah, I don't think you're saying that.
Regardless of my position on whether APP Forty-Three applies or doesn't apply, to say, start a process and then also approve the outcome of that process once you've started it.
Without going through the process.
Without going through the process is tricky. So that, the dual nature of this particular article is, is tricky regardless of where one comes down on what the name of this building should be.
Mark, I understand your point about not being able to see the motion, to help clarify our thinking perhaps. You know, the town manager, the, the town moderator is probably still online. Would it be appropriate to ask her if she has any comments on this in terms of the process?
Here she comes.
Well, it is quite correct that the motion, not the article, is what the meeting takes action on. And the motion certainly has to be within the scope of the article, but it can vary a little bit. So, you know, for example, if the proponents of this article wished to remove the APP reference from the motion and, and stick just to urging that the particular name be considered for the school, they could do that. Or they could take the name out and only move on the APP part. And I, I have no idea what their intention is. So it is useful to know exactly what the petitioners propose to move under the article before the board considers whether it supports, whether it would recommend in favor or, or against action by the meeting or would wish simply not to take a position.
So we won't know what the motion is until shortly before town meeting?
Right, so. So let's put this up.
Well, actually, often we have the motions at the hearings, Henry, because we, we do always include the motions in the PowerPoint presentations, but we didn't have those this time, so people didn't work on drafting their motions.
Okay.
But in fact, the deadline for motions has not happened yet and we haven't reviewed motions with the town council. And indeed, motions can change at any point up until the time they're made on the floor of town meeting.
Right, that's really helpful. So I think we, I'm going to make a motion that we report at town meeting.
I agree, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I, may I ask a question about that though?
Sure.
I would like to see or ask, either ask town council to appear or see a written memo by town council that, that opines on whether or not APP Forty-Three is or is not applicable to this building.
Good idea.
Because that would influence me in terms of my position.
Unless they change the motion where that becomes irrelevant.
Well.
I think town meeting is going to ask that question.
I think it's a credible question and, and you know.
Well, they, it's conceivable that they could change the motion so that that becomes irrelevant.
Right.
Well, there's, there's actually two questions to ask town council. One is whether or not APP Forty-Three applies. And number two is whether the, any, any body of the town other than the school committee has the authority to name it. Because that's the crux of the matter.
That seems like the same to me, the same question.
No, no, because APP Forty-Three doesn't, doesn't, doesn't necessarily apply if, say, the town meeting has the authority to name the school. All right, and it doesn't have any application if the school committee names the school. And the, we don't know what the authority of the board, the Select Board is with regard to naming the school. So it's, basically it's, we're asking town council whether this, the expected motion under this article is, would be, would be valid.
Okay, I, you know, you're the liaison to the D E I Commission, right? My conversations and my understanding was is that they wanted to hear from the town what the townspeople thought the name of the school should be, and that was the purpose. Now, we're getting, we're getting very tied up in the.
Because of the way they expressed it.
Because of the way they expressed it, right?
Right.
So if there's some way that you could tell them that, what was their intention of, of this article so that the motion is clear, I think that would be very helpful so that we don't get all tangled up in this and miss the point.
And so if the article, if the motion says that the town meeting recommend that the school be named X.
Yes.
That would be a very simple, straightforward motion.
Exactly.
Yeah, and I, so I think it, it's, and I'm happy to, to ask for this, that the D E I Commission develop a draft motion and submit it as soon as possible so that we know what their intent is.
That would be good.
I think though, given what the town moderator just told us, we need to allow for the possibility that the way this article is written, someone could stand up in town meeting and make a motion asking us to apply APP Forty-Three anyway.
Right.
And/or amend any motion that's made. And therefore, I think it's, it's very helpful for us to get that opinion.
You're right, you're right. Actually make a motion to name the school anything else.
Anything else, it, there's, it's a lot of possibilities.
So, so Mark, if you are going to approach D E I to submit a draft motion as soon as possible, I hope that also goes to the town moderator?
Yeah, of course.
Yep.
Good point though.
Right.
We do need to know the legal opinion.
Right.
Right.
Someone might ask at town meeting, we need to know.
We need to be informed of that, but I don't want us to lose sight of what I think their intent was.
So I, I would ask Terry, who, who made a motion to, to do a, do a recommendation at town meeting.
Right.
Whether you would consider, I think we, we need to schedule a little bit more time on this before then, so maybe we want to withdraw that motion because that would be deciding how we're going to deal with that.
But if we, if we defer our recommendation to town meeting, that doesn't prevent us from making a recommendation prior to that time.
As long as it doesn't.
Well, I could just.
Or we could just take no action on it for the moment.
Yeah, we're just, we're just going. Yeah, we're just, we're just gonna table this till the next meeting and when we have a motion.
Or a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, was, was we withdrawn?
So...
That's withdrawn.
Right, it's withdrawn.
Withdraw the motion and we'll...
And if we don't have a motion by the twenty-fifth, I'll make the motion again.
Yeah, we'll address it at the next, next time we're looking at these.
Okay.
Okay.
So, our next one is number twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Citizen petition, town meeting voting reform.
No, twenty-six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Town meeting study committee.
I recommend affirmative action on Article twenty-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
That's Carmen's motion, right?
Right.
We should probably ask for discussion on those, but...
Yeah, we should. You're right.
We don't need discussion.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven. Citizen petition, town meeting voting reform. That's...
That's, is that the clicker one?
No.
That's, no.
No, this is the ballot. This is, all the questions are...
That's the vote, that's the, yeah.
I recommend no action on Article twenty-seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-eight.
Citizen petition, remote participation at annual meetings and special town meetings. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Perry, did you want to make a comment?
I would like to, if I may. Edward Perry, three six two Bedford Street. I raised the issue at the hearing that this warrant incorrectly identifies the petitioners. And in fact, I checked with the town clerk the next day and found that I was correct. The petitioners are Scott Gillis and Mark Martinez, David Allen and David Carr, claiming to have been part of the process, but they did not write the article, nor did they get enough signatures on a petition that they submitted to be claiming that they have an article before town meeting. So I respectfully recommend that the town moderator or the assistant town moderator who apparently is gonna handle this refer to Scott Gillis as the petitioner. If anybody else wants to comment from the floor, they have that right to do so. But unfortunately, this warrant has a bunch of flaws in it, and that's one of them. And David Allen and David Carr should not be identified as moving this article. Thank you.
So, Mr. Perry, you just referenced that going forward, it should be referred, Scott Gillis should be referred to. Did you mean to say Scott Gillis and Mark Martinez?
Well, Scott Gillis is the petitioner for twenty-eight. Mark Martinez is the petitioner for twenty-nine. They will make their separate presentations. So, Scott Gillis and Mark Martinez worked on both of them. I believe Scott Gillis will be making the motion. And I agree with others, previous articles, that it's unfortunate that motions were not brought to the select board hearing so you could see them. Hopefully, that won't happen again in the future.
Having said that, regardless, if, if we recommend either no action or negative action on this, who the petitioner is is not relevant, except for the procedural issues, you know, for future reference. So, and I would be prepared to, to not recommend voting for remote participation at town meeting.
This, Mr. Jared, this is not about recommending remote participation at town meeting. This is recommending submitting legislation, home rule legislation, like Wayland has done down the road to have Concord consider and have the legislature allow Concord to have remote participation when the technology is there to allow it.
Mr. Perry is right. To determine whether the town will authorize the select board to petition, the general court for special legislation is outlined.
Still, if that's what we don't want, we would vote in the negative on it.
That's true, but it's not a home rule petition. It's not a home rule petition.
I might be in favor of this. I'm not, I wanna do some more thinking about it.
I do, too.
I'm not ready to vote on this yet.
I agree with...
Okay, well, that's easy.
Okay, so we can defer twenty-eight for a later one. Article twenty-nine is now the citizen petition, use of handheld electronic voting at town meeting.
I think this is a great idea. I'm gonna move that the select board take affirmative action on this article.
Second.
I have, this, I believe this is a case where town meeting is, is being asked to, to sort of force something to happen that could happen anyway, just by decision of staff. And, and, and so I, I think that I'm a little uncomfortable with requiring it. I'm thinking about...
It doesn't require it. It says, "To determine whether the town will vote to utilize clickers." So I don't think that's a requirement. That's permission to use them.
I don't know.
Well, vote to utilize clickers at meetings and special meetings beginning in twenty-twenty-five and thereafter.
It could easily say permit, which would make it an option.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, one thing that I heard Carmen talk about several times, which I agree with, is only, you know, if you have a unanimous article, you don't need anything else. But if you have, you know, a two-thirds or a controversial article and you're gonna have to start with paper ballot and all this other stuff, these clickers are gonna be much faster and more accurate. So, I guess we need to see what the motion is, but I'm not sure they're gonna use them for every single article.
The, "Will vote to utilize" doesn't say, "Will vote to maybe utilize sometimes."
Right.
It says, "Use them." It says, "Use them at town meetings and special town meetings." I can imagine a one article, special town meeting that we're having because we need to authorize a land purchase or something like that that's on a fast track.
You're not gonna go passing out clickers for one article.
Yeah, and I, and I personally witnessed extreme delays at one of the town meetings that I visited that used clickers in the, in the process of, of logging in the voters. So...
When was that, Mark?
This was when we were doing the study of clicker use prior to our own experiment. You know, the iPads or whatever it was that people were supposed to check in with weren't working and an entire town meeting was held up.
Well, I mean, like, how many years ago was that?
Like any other technology.
Technology, like microphones or anything of that kind. You really have to ring it, ring them out in advance of the meeting.
Right, which is why I'm uncomfortable with requiring its use.
Well, I agree. I, I think it permits its use.
Yeah, I'm not even sure whether, suppose the clickers aren't working? Can we vote on anything?
Well, that's the problem, for instance, with the hybrid meetings that we have. We are completely paralyzed if the sound system isn't working. Whereas if we were just having a regular in-person meeting, we could proceed without them. So, if you, if they are required, you really can't proceed if they don't work.
Yeah, my point being that in the absence of, of voting something that requires the use, they may be used.
So if the motion were to say permit as opposed to utilize, then your objection would be addressed?
Would be satisfied.
Okay, well, let's, let's see. So we can, we can vote affirmative action, subject to the, the motion?
No, 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 no. Someone would need to, we could, we could defer this to town meeting, a vote at town meeting, and someone needs to contact the petitioners and, and communicate to them our concern.
Or we can come back to it with the other recommendations that we're gonna need to make.
Or we can simply defer it and...
Right.
But someone should take the action item to reach out to Scott Gillis and Mark Martinez.
So again, you know, our moderator has heard this discussion. There is gonna be a meeting with town council around the motions, so...
Well, then we'll see what results from that meeting, you know.
But that meeting might be after March twenty-fifth.
And?
We need a recommendation. Well, we could also just say we defer to town meeting.
That's right.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, you can always, because when we take that vote tonight, it doesn't mean that next week, we can't vote to change that deferral.
Okay, but I'm still unclear. So how are we gonna communicate this to the petitioners?
I'll do it. I'll get their contact information from Shannon.
Great, thank you.
I'll, I'll do it.
Thank you, Terry. Okay.
But should we, let's go back to another, something else. It seems that, should we be recommending to people who have placed articles on the warrant that we should be advising them how they should phrase or how they should present, they should draft the motions under their articles?
Ideally...
Or should we make that be their responsibility, as I think it typically has been?
I think ideally it would have happened during the hearing, because that's the point of the hearing, is for us to give them recommendations on how they could change their article. It didn't happen. It's only coming up now, which is fine. But I do think that we need to make every effort to take these types of articles seriously because I think people are really trying to make town meeting more participatory, get more attendance. So I think, I think we need to kind of bend over backwards, maybe to...
I like this one, and so I think we should, I personally would favor doing what we can to make it work.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's, well, maybe stepping out of my shoes, though, to do that.
Okay.
All right, so what are we doing? Defer to the town meeting?
Number thirty.
Okay.
Well, we're deferring it for now.
We're just deferring it for now.
Okay.
Okay, Article thirty. "authorize the select board to petition for changes in previously approved home rule petition regarding a checkout bag charge." This is from the agricultural committee.
Yeah, recommend affirmative action.
In favor of that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Number thirty-one.
"Update the town meeting to meet the climate challenge." This is the climate action committees update the town goal, climate action goals to meet...
And that's just to conform to the, to the...
State.
To the statute?
To the state.
The, the one from which we already got the...
No, 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 this is, no, this is a...
No, that, that's the fossil fuels.
This one is simply to increase our aspirational goals to meet the state's current goals.
So the last time that Concord's energy goals were set were twenty-seventeen, annual town meeting, Article fifty-one. And this proposes an update to specific, mostly intermediate goals.
It's catching us up with the state.
To twenty-fifty, so it's, it says, "Providing that Concord strive to reduce emissions by fifty percent by twenty-thirty, seventy-five percent by twenty-forty, and eighty-five percent by twenty-fifty." My, my recollection on this is that the Article fifty-one goals simply set twenty-fifty out
Ah, okay.
as a, as a, but didn't really have any steps to get there.
Right.
Well, these don't have steps to get there either.
Well, it has intermediate steps in the sense that it says...
But they don't have concrete steps to get there.
We know whether we were ahead or behind by twenty-thirty based on fifty percent.
That is true.
So it, it...
See, to me, this is not controversial because it's not an action item, really. It's an aspiration.
Right.
Well, it also says, "Declare a climate emergency in recognition of climate change." Just to be clear, that's part A of this one. So the climate action committee, to which I'm also the liaison, has discussed this and, and it is recommended by staff that we would be better aligned with the state goals to which, which have sort of moved beyond what our goals were. So I'm generally supportive of the idea of making sure that we maintain a leadership position here. So I would move that we recommend affirmative action on Article thirty-one.
Second.
You know, my only reservation here is that it's relatively easy to state goals, but as I said in the hearing, concrete actions to meet those goals is really where things happen.
I think we all agree with that.
So, I, I kind of hesitate to say that by, by passing this article, we've somehow accomplished something when we haven't.
The, the activity that's going on in the committee at the moment is to actually work to publish our status against these goals on a more regular basis, hopefully, at least every other year, so that we would know how we're doing. At this stage of the game, not only do we have a very far-off high goal, but we also don't have the intermediate measurements to help us understand whether we're making progress. So both of those things are necessary in my view.
And also a plan going forward that says, as I said at the hearing, what are some things that are, we're considering now that might help us meet those goals? Like the solar implementation task force, like electrifying our fleet, like clean... I mean, so what are some of the things that are in front of us so that people see that there are real actions related to this? These aren't just, I'm so, I'm, I'm so...
You're right. So another concern I have has to do with the terminology, declare a climate emergency and what the implications of that are for budget and, and other actions that we may be, need to take.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because I'm wondering what town council is gonna think about that term and whether it's, it's gonna be a problem in any way.
Because, you know, there are federal and state activities where they do declare certain kinds of emergencies and then there are clear consequences of that?
Yes. They're binding in some way.
Yeah, right.
So I, I guess I would like to defer this.
But Mary, you're not going to have any specific actions added to this article?
Not to the article, but if I saw something, I would...
You mean as part of the presentation, you know, these are things we're doing?
Yes, or these, these are things we're going, that are available to us to do.
Okay.
That would, that would influence my recommendation. I, I don't like articles that...
Okay. Article thirty-two.
So do you want me to withdraw my motion?
Please.
Done.
Okay.
Article thirty-two, fossil fuel free demonstration by law amendments. This puts us in line with all the other towns in the pilot project for the fossil fuel.
I recommend affirmative action on Article thirty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Aye.
What's the next, we're, I think we're, oh, no, we've got the cell phone towers.
We have thirty-eight, thirty-nine. So the citizen petition for, yeah, new cell phone tower location at the landfill is Article thirty-eight.
Did everybody read Jason's email?
Yes.
What?
Jason's email that was forwarded?
Can't hear you, Mary.
I'm sorry. Did, did everybody read the email from Jason that Megan forwarded to us about his thoughts about these articles?
No.
No.
Okay, then let's defer this.
When was that?
Maybe it came from...
Friday?
Maybe it came from...
Did it like Friday?
I, I, I don't, I don't think that we should be in a position at this point of voting to recommend any specific location for cell towers because that's a decision that should be made on the basis of availability of the property, the coverage of the cell tower, and the feasibility of building it at that location. And I think that we don't have any, we, we don't have the information necessary to recommend that a cell tower be built in any particular place. That if we wanted to have a motion that said that we recommend that the town find, use whatever, put all efforts into finding the appropriate location to build another cell, cell tower as rapidly as possible or something like that, that would be appropriate, but... tower as rapidly as possible, or something like that, that would be appropriate, but I don't want to pick a location.
So the effect of these two articles is to urge the select board to direct the town manager to issue an RFP for the, for the location.
I would like to read the memo from Jason.
Yeah, and he addresses the issue with the RFP.
Yeah, I'm not ready to read that. I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
So, okay, so we'll come back and discuss it, but I was just, it's not, it's actually go out and try and get some proposals.
Actually, for various reasons, issuing an RFP is not timely based on current negotiations that are going on.
Exactly.
Okay, the last one we have is number 42, because we didn't finish 41, so 42 tourist bylaw amendments, that seems like housekeeping. I make a motion that we...
Second.
Affirmative action.
And second and I.
I think, isn't this what we talked about tonight with Jason? And he was going to go get additional information, and I had some questions about what council had to say related to that?
No, this is the one where you said there's more needs on the word selectmen a few places.
I'm sorry, let me, am I getting it right?
Chris.
I think, go ahead.
You were talking about what Chris Carmody had to say, right, Linda?
Right. Yeah, it was Chris, yeah.
Right, didn't you have some catches that you found about selectmen and select board and stuff?
The omission of a word, or is that a different one?
It was Terry was talking about a letter, Terry was talking about a letter, different issue. This is, Linda had some questions about this, and Chris was going to get back to her.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I believe there are a couple grammatical edits from Ms. Escobedo, and the question was if town council had reviewed it, and they have. So I don't know if there was a follow-up beyond the language recommendations.
And I did ask if there were, you know, if there were other things that should be included in that bylaw.
Probably if we put it over to our next meeting, nothing will be lost.
I just want to make sure I'm going to be able to follow up. You asked if there were other things that should be included in...
If town council took, rather than just looking at the specific language, if they took a look at that bylaw, and closely enough to determine whether there should be other things that should have been included in that bylaw.
Okay.
That was my question.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it?
Do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, let's talk some more.